Sorry Judy. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Lompoc City Council Meeting, August 4th, 2015. Madam, we have a roll call please.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Hombdal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Oral communications. This is your opportunity to speak to us on any subject that is on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communications and we're going to be moving into closed session. We have two items to discuss this evening. First is a conference with for legal or for real property negotiations on 8:01 and 8:51 Cordoba, Lompoc, California. The second is conference with legal counsel, anticipated legal litigation. We'll see you in about half an hour, 45 minutes, an hour.
It worked.
Good evening. We're going to come back into open session. City Attorney, would you give a report on closed session?
Yes, the city council had a closed session on two items that are identified on the agenda. On the first one involving a conference with real property negotiators, direction was given to the city's negotiator. On the second item regarding anticipated litigation, there is nothing to report.
Thank you. And if you'll please stand and join Pastor Kathleen Puntar at her invocation.
I wanted to say thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's, I consider it a privilege to pray for you and to pray for our community. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you with gratitude and praise. We are blessed with liberty because brave members of our armed forces have fought to keep us free. We thank them for their service and sacrifice and we ask you, oh God, to bless them with strength and protection. We pray also for our justice system. Ours is a nation pledge to justice for all and though our system has imperfections, it is much better than most of the world. We pray for all those who serve as police officers, prosecutors, defendants, and judges. We pray for the fires burning across our state. We ask for safety for firefighters and other emergency responders. We pray for those who are evacuated out of their homes. We pray for the drought situation in California. We ask for your direction in our community, our state, and our nation. Most of all, oh Lord, we ask for your wisdom to be with the city council this night. We pray for your blessing to be upon all gathered here and we ask for your help to be with all in our community. Honor those who seek to lead with compassion and justice and fairness. Help them to hear clearly the voices of concerns and especially to listen for those without a voice. These things we pray to you, oh God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Administrator's Report.
Mayor, I have nothing to bring up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we proceed, just a couple comments. This week in posting the council agenda, there was an error made and even though the agenda was posted at City Hall, copies were available at City Hall, the full copies, and over at our public library, the full agenda or the finalized agenda did not make it to the website as we normally desire it to do. So, City Attorney, would you give us a legal opinion on what we do from here?
The Brown Act only requires that there be a brief general description on the agenda of each item of business. It doesn't require a recommendation. It doesn't require the staff reports be available on the internet. The draft agenda and the final agenda had all of the same items on them. The one thing that was a little bit different is that the item in the draft agenda regarding approving minutes did not give the dates of the meetings for which the minutes would be on the agenda. So, I think frankly that even minus the dates about the minutes, you could proceed with the entire agenda since there was a brief general description of each item in the draft agenda. However, it is certainly within your discretion to decide not to consider certain items if you have concerns about the quality of the public notice that was given.
Thank you. Okay, so even though we have a legal opinion that we can proceed with our meeting this evening legally, we all know that sometimes we have to look at other things besides just the legal opinions, not your opinion, we value the opinions, but the legal decisions. We also have the public to be concerned with and for transparency and public opinion, we may not want to proceed with the rest of the meeting. We may want to not, we may not want to proceed with individual items. I myself feel very uncomfortable with proceeding with new business item number three, which discusses compensation for the city council. And I'm going to choose to have that item pulled regardless of whether we do anything I have some concerns about item number five, utility billing rules and regulations, not because the description wasn't there, but we've had issues with utility billing. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to pull the council on item number five if we proceed. And on the consent calendar, even though it's minor, but a full description was not there, which is legally required, it did not have the date on the approval of the minutes. So I'm going to ask that we pull, at least on the consent calendar, item number one, which is approval of the minutes and we can approve the minutes of July 21st at our next meeting. So now, before we proceed, I'd like to get an opinion of the council on item number five, whether we proceed discussing that this evening or, and just so you know, these aren't, I mean, these items can be brought to the next meeting without any real harm being done. I mean, there's no time sensitivity on any of these, so. Opinion of the council on item number five, if someone wants to chime in. Does anyone have an issue with?
Again, Mayor Lingle, what would be the reasons that, again, that you'd want to possibly pull this item from the?
I'm sorry?
The technicality?
Because it appeared on, even though it's a full description on the draft agenda of what we're doing, there's been issues with discussion about utilities in general, you know, this past week with people complaining about our payments and everything else. So just because there's been public discussion about utilities in general, not this issue, just for full disclosure, I want to get fully vetted. That's my only possible concern with that. Legally, we're okay because there is a description of what we're discussing here this evening. We're not discussing the billing practices. We're discussing utility billing procedures and special charges and an updated utility billing. So, so that's what we're doing. Councilmember Hombdal.
Yeah, I would like to see how many people in the audience here that looked for it. I think there's people here wanting to discuss it, was in the, so I don't know, are they going to be had to come back again? Is that what the, if we do not go with it today?
Okay, people here this evening, if you're here to discuss utility, item number one, would you please stand so we just, we get an idea? Okay. Item number one. City Administrator?
I was just going to clarify, it's item number five.
Oh, I remember, yes, item number five, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with, I don't want to say kicking it down the road, but waiting two more weeks to go through this. It's significant, it's a 40-page report. I think if the public didn't have all the time on the staff report, because is this, was the staff report wasn't posted, is that what I'm getting?
No, we had legal sufficiency. What we're required to do is to post the agenda, which we did. So we have legal sufficiency. Furthermore, the reports themselves were, the paper copies were printed and circulated by 11:00 AM on Thursday, well over two days in advance of the 72-hour limit. So, the reports to those that are like subscribing or issued, written reports were in hand by last Thursday morning. So it is that the, on the website, we didn't switch from, replace the draft agenda with the final agenda until Monday morning.
And on the final agenda, is the staff report in there?
It's linked in and it became linked Monday morning.
So Monday morning is when that staff report got?
Was available on our website.
Online, okay.
Yeah, but again, there's no, there's no legal requirement to have it there. That's what we do above and beyond.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to just throw two cents in and say, due to the fact that it was only yesterday morning that the report was available, rather than just go with the minimum legal, I'd like to make it fully transparent where everybody would have the chance. So I, I don't have a problem with moving this for two weeks.
Okay, and I don't either. I think that's three of us that, so we're going to continue item number five for two weeks and we're going to continue item number seven, the discussion of mayor and council members' compensation.
And number one on the?
Oh, and number one on the, that is the approval of the minutes, because that was not, is it slight technicality, but so we'll, we'll not discuss that. Councilmember Starbuck.
Why do we intend to move item seven?
For exactly the same reason, for full disclosure, giving people allow, allow it to be fully vetted. I think it's something that I feel very uncomfortable not allowing the public to fully read about this, vet it before they, before we even discuss it. Go ahead.
So I'm going to assume then that everything on item six was fully disclosed, you know, on Thursday then?
Actually, it so happens that it was, that link was live, even though the others were not.
Okay, that's why, that's why item number six, we can fully discuss here. Anyone else? Councilmember Mosby?
I'll agree with you on item seven.
Okay. So, does anyone have a, well, I think, well, we have at least two people agreeing to continue item number seven. Do I have? Okay, so. Okay, so we're going to continue item number five and item number seven and item number So that brings us to public comment. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes. Anything on the consent calendar? Mr. Leslie, you have things on the consent calendar you want to talk about?
Pardon me?
You have things on the consent calendar you want to talk about?
Mayor, councilmembers, John Lynn, Lompoc President, you made a good decision continuing those two items, but that's not why I came up to talk to you. If you do need proof that the true mash item was available, I actually printed it on Friday and I have a dated copy. I just came to sing the praises of Kevin McCune, who has worked diligently for three years to collect rent on three city properties that I discovered a long time ago that in one case someone else was actually collecting rent on, in the other case, no one was paying any rent. And the third one of four is on your consent calendar tonight. So when you see Kevin, say thank you, because it's been a long process and in the case of one person who will remain nameless, it was quite a battle to get them on board. So, good job.
John, did you state your name?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anyone else on the consent calendar? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent and I am looking for a motion to approve with the exception of item number one.
Let me not pull an item, but I'd like to question item number three. Is Mr. McCune or Mr. Luther? I guess on the way up here, Mr. Luther, one of the questions I have is, is we're going to rent eight acres of agricultural ground with our well, but one of the things the report never says is the reimbursement of our pump or metering of water or anything in here. So I'm curious, are we giving the water to this enterprise that's going to rent from us or is that part of the rent or how are they going to irrigate, I guess?
I actually don't have the answer to that. I think Kevin's in the building, I could, if you want to continue it for a few minutes, he can.
Well, I don't want to stop the meeting on this, but it's just one of those items of interest down there. And the other question I have is, we're building it in the middle of our recreational fields, Bike Skills Park. I'm curious about how the use of pesticides will be monitored, because I have no faith in the county being able to do anything. I know that this guy probably can't afford to go in there and do organics, so there should be something in here that we're not spraying our kids at the bike park and our soccer players on the weekends and the monitoring of some drifts.
Okay, that was a statement, you're okay with everything else, okay. Okay, so I still need a motion to approve consent calendar with the exception of item number one. Oh, Councilmember Mosby?
I'll make that motion approval.
Okay, and do I have a second?
All right, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Can we vote? That passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, now we're at oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for three minutes on any item you so choose.
Did you guys have a chance to look any of this over?
State your name, Ray.
It's the stuff that I brought in that shows you.
State your name for the record. State your name.
Pardon? Ray Leslie. Sorry. One mind tracker. Anyway, I handed out these, this pamphlet for everybody to look at, to see what's going on and, you know, I'm just trying to get it so that it's pretty obvious that these water lines are all on my property, not just a drain line. To supply me with water to the house probably took about an hour. If you look at these maps on here, it shows you on the last map of the three pages, or no, the last map in here, in the pamphlet, it's the big one that opens up. And if you look at that one, in the blown up at the very bottom, it shows you the 12-inch main coming through my property and it shows you the little meter box. And that's what they supplied to me. The rest of this is all for the city and the drain line and that's all on my property. The big main, fire hydrant, meter box, the drain line, and everything. And that's why they came to the conclusion in the first letter on here that shows from the Campbells of why they gave city water rates. And I think you guys should look at this in the perspective that we're right. This isn't something we're trying to pull over on you, it's been this way for 11 years. It was this way when the Campbells had the property, when they put that tower in and all the stuff and they brought the water line down through there. She wrote a letter and signed it saying that's what it was, that all the utilities would be at city rates. The water should definitely be at city rates from everything that we've done. It's not just the drain line on my property, your water line's on my property. Comes down off the hill there and it's all on my property. I took and made sure it was, I witched it and found out, it's definitely on my property. You guys should have an easement all the way down there. There's not, there's just the one that it shows here that you have going through there on the, if you look at these here plans on there and it shows the easement you have, it's on there. And this easement paper that was given to me by Larry Bean, if you guys study this, which I hope you do, if you look at the numbering on it, one to five, and you look at the next page on here, and this is all he gave me, was three to three and two to three. All right, we're missing a bunch of pages, number one. Number two is, they don't correspond with, if you look at the numbering, the size of the numbers, and I've had experts go over this, they're different documents. They're not the same documents. So when Larry Bean gave me these, he either made a big mistake or he doesn't know what he's doing, because they're not correct. And I think you guys should kind of take this under consideration and come back and let me know what you're going to do, but if we can't work out something this time, we're going to end up in court together and that's all I can do with it. And I hate doing that because it's just going to cost us both a bunch of money and time. And this shows that I'm right, I mean, with a water line on your property and you actually don't even have an easement for that, you just have one for the drain line. There's going to be a lot of controversy, there's going to be a lot of things that go on that I think you're going to lose. Can't guarantee that, but I hope so. Anyway, will you guys consider looking at this and give me some kind of an answer? I'd like the council, if we can, I don't know how we go about this, but somebody told me that we could, that I could ask for the council to decide on this here instead of going to everybody else and to do that, is that a possibility?
We all have a copy right now, so we'll all take a look at it.
All right. When could I get an answer on this? Do you know? I mean, is this going to be a week, a year, never?
Sooner than later. I can't tell you when.
I mean approximate. I've been doing this for quite a while, don't you understand that I'm getting a little bit upset about it? You know, that we should, we should work together on this and just say, okay, we'll try and do this in two weeks or something, let me know.
We, you realize, we as a council cannot discuss anything outside of a council meeting together, okay? We cannot, we, Councilmember Mosby, Councilmember Starbuck and I, we cannot sit down and discuss this together. We can only do it in public. So I can't tell you that we're going to get you an answer in two weeks. If we choose to, if somehow if we choose to put this on the agenda, the earliest it would be, would be two weeks. So I don't know when you, when we're going to get an answer, but I believe, I believe you've already received an answer from the city, okay? I believe more than once you've received an answer from the city as where we stand on this. And I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it's going to change.
Okay, well, I'm trying to be a nice guy about it, but if you look at some of the paperwork, I'm going to give you a chance to go over it and look at the letter and look at all the stuff and the numbers on there. I did go to an attorney and have him look at it and he said it's definitely, either something's forged or there are different documents.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, did you have a comment?
I was just going to suggest to accommodate if, and we, you and I can discuss if, later, Mr. Mayor, if you want, or we can discuss it now, but there is a possibility, I wouldn't suggest we'd be able to be back within two weeks because we're already past our submission deadlines for that, but two meetings out, if you want, we can bring a recommendation, if you'd like to bring this to a head, so to speak, in a council meeting as early as two meetings out, we'd be able to bring a report as best we understand it. That would be the September 1st meeting. We'd be able to bring forth the issues surrounding this as best we have it, as best we understand, be able to make staff recommendation if, if you want to bring it to a head here at a council meeting.
Okay, so I believe we'll need, Councilmember Mosby?
I was just going to say, with your recommendation, I could agree with, because I think we need to find out just how these pipes are going. And if people in the canyon like know where the water's going and their direction. If he doesn't have a, the city put it through, he's probably without a lease, we need to find that out.
Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to see us bring it back and get a resolution to this. This is a citizen, he's in good faith here, he's bringing us documentation, it sounds like he's getting frustrated. I think we, we at least owe that. Let's clarify it and make a decision, get some, or get some sort of consensus on this.
Yeah, I do think we owe him a response, a clear response, whether it's something that satisfies him or not. I think, I think we owe him a clarified response. I think it'd be worthwhile. We, we have sort of pieced through the issue sometimes through public comment and the like. It would probably be healthy to have a comprehensive discussion of it and allocate more time, provide Mr. Leslie more than just the three-minute time period to be able to state his case and allow staff and ample time to be able to present what they understand. So if that's acceptable with you and if you're available, Mr. Leslie, we put it on the September 1st agenda. I'm just not sure we could be ready that quickly in two weeks, so that would be four weeks out. And if that fits your schedule and if it works for you, council, then we'll target that. Is that well? Very well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oral communications, okay, if seeing no one rise, we're going to close our oral communication and we're going to bring it back to new business, the only item The only item we're gonna be discussing tonight on new business is item number six, government-to-government relations with the Santa Ynez Band of Chumash Indians. And this is going to be Teresa Galavan. Okay, we'll reopen oral communications for you real quick. Come on. That's okay. We're gonna reopen oral communications real quick.
My name's Joanna Coe, and I live at 1016 East Cypress Avenue, a triplex on the south side of the street at the corner of Third. And he's gonna put up our location using Google Maps. There it is. I came back from vacation, oops. To go, trying to, okay. So I came back from vacation and found four Chinese elms had been cut down. These two pictures are a block apart, but both are on the south side. My neighbors and the owner had no idea what had happened, so I called Cotty Blee, I believe, at the city, and he said those trees were removed because they were buckling the sidewalk. Okay. Here is what is between those two pictures, two old holes where Lompoc removed stumps sometime before 2008. That's courtesy of my neighbor. The sidewalk is not buckled, but the trees were never replaced, and there are more empty holes towards town. My neighbors and I are worried that we are going to get the same treatment. Oddly enough, the trees across the street remain as is. Perhaps owner involvement prevented the city from taking out the Chinese elm they wished to remove. We can't bring the Chinese elms back, but we can complain about the city's process for planning and removing trees. Trees are removed without informing owners or the community. The trees on the chopping block appear to be random, or perhaps based on the state of the adjoining residential property, rather than sound arborist principles. Remediation is not done in a timely manner. Perhaps some of these trees should, could have been saved. So what do we want? We'd like to see Cypress Avenue's tree canopy restored. One suggestion would be to look at best practices in cities that value trees and shade, such as Santa Barbara. Replacement trees do not have to be great myrtles or other bush-like options. The goal should be a shady street, not more concrete. So I would like to request that the community be involved. Tree removal should include informing and discussing options with the community before removing the tree. Should removal be necessary, removing the stump, repairing the sidewalk, and replacing the old tree with a new one is part of completing the task. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And ma'am, just so you know, our beautification commission meets on a monthly basis, and they always discuss the trees that are potentially, potential for removal, and those that have been removed. So look on the agenda for the beautification commission, definitely attend that, okay? Councilor Homdahl?
Your idea is good. You should contact them, but you know, the thing is that, the other way around, they should be contacted by the owners of the property that it's gonna affect. Because one thing that she isn't saying, that if you have the right type of trees sitting out front, it makes a difference on the valuation of the property and how you have. This happened out in Mission Hills 20 years ago, and they went out and cut trees, and there was a major upheaval. So I think that before they go out and drop any tree on the ground, they need to divest the owner in front of them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for, okay, you snuck in, didn't you?
Well, you cut us all off. I'm glad she wanted to speak.
Cut you off?
I'm all.
I said, anyone else?
She went on.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm all, local resident. I want to thank you for deferring this. I think that's in the best interest of the public, not to discuss items that weren't available for public review. But, and the Chumash was the only attachment that was on there. And you asked the question, if we wanted to discuss the water issue, that's hard to say, since we didn't have the attachment to look at in time to actually review that. And that is an issue of great concern in this community, so I appreciate you deferring that. But as I spoke with you, Mayor Lingle, and this council has requested numerous times, as well as previous councils have, is that the agenda be ready earlier than Friday. And I know you get your packets sometimes ahead of time, but I've also heard you say you don't get the information until Friday. Now, when I talked, well, actually, you said the packet was available at the library on Thursday. So why wouldn't it be put online as soon as it becomes available, and not wait until Friday, sometimes almost the close of business Friday? You know, people have lives. I'm not sure if you really want the public involved or not, using that method. That's a lot of information to go through if somebody has an interest in some of those areas, pages and pages to go through. Not that I want to dig through all the dry stuff, but, but I am interested in, in what we're doing in the city. I wish more people were involved. So I would request that the agenda be posted by Wednesday with the attachments, to give the public time to review them as well. As we see on this agenda, nothing in here has a deadline. So if we can't complete it by Wednesday, it could be moved to a future agenda, unless it has an absolute finite deadline to meet. And I will make that request again. There's a lot of information to absorb on these agendas when they're available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just again, for clarification, this was an exception. This was an error. A person made an error on this one. And normally, the agenda is posted online the same day, this, just a comment to yours, okay? The same day that we get our agenda.
Do you normally get it on Friday, then?
No, no, we, okay, we're not gonna be disc, I'm just gonna make a comment, a statement, okay? When it is available, when it is all completed, we get our packets, it is posted online at the same time. So you get it when we get it.
Well, I know technically, you know, it's 72 hours in advance.
Yes, but if it's.
Reasonably, you should be given opportunity to, particularly on the complicated agendas.
This, this issue was a, was just a simple error.
I understand this one.
And, and we're taking care of it. Okay, City Manager, did you have a comment?
Yes. Thank you. One thing, I think you answered for me, because I thought we had answered the question before, and we got asked again, well, why couldn't it be there? It was simply an honest mistake, and that's the only reason it didn't end up getting posted on the website. That having been said, we routinely, in general, want to reemphasize, we prepare ours as early as possible. With the dynamic of how many different issues there are in many directions, it is quite the challenge to package up things and have them ready to go Wednesday, but we give that our all out. And lately, we've been consistently able to deliver on that, knowing that we had a little bit of time there where we hit it on Thursdays and Fridays. This time around, we were pretty well lopped up by Wednesday, and we did do actual delivery on Thursday. I did want to add, though, for the public certification, that we do have, the written copies are available at the library. That's on an ongoing basis. I realize that's not as convenient for some people as being accessible on the website. I also recognize there are going to be times, if nothing else, because we have a server down, that our website's not gonna be functional. And if people are, if, the important thing, from what I'm, what I've heard and feedback from members of the public, is to have things early, we're merely saying, they are available at the library if you, if for some reason or another it's not working electronically, one other option, one other resource is, they're available at the library. That's all we're saying. We're not sending people to the library. We're just trying to say, we've got a lot of options if for one reason or another, there is an electronic failure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else for oral communication? Again? Okay, thank you. We're gonna close our communication and bring it back to new business, and this is going to be item number six, the government-to-government relations with the Santa Yez Band of Chumash Indians. Assistant City Administrator, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, audience and viewers. Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager. And this item before you has been brought forward by the Economic Development Committee. In particular, member Steve Pepe brought this initiative forward, did the research in the background discussion, and brought the item forward to the Economic Development Committee on June 4th, as you see it recommended before you today. And it was unanimously approved by the committee to bring it forward for your discussion and consideration, that the city council establish a two-year period, for a two-year period, an ad hoc committee of the mayor and another council member, to meet periodically with two representatives of the Santa Yez Band of Chumash Indians, to discuss specific matters that may be of mutual interest as they arrive. And I would like to ask member Steve Pepe to please come up and give you that background and a little more discussion. And we also have Sam Cohen, Government Affairs and Legal Officer, here this evening with us, and the, a member of the Tribal Business Committee, Maxine Littlejohn, as well in support. So thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Steve Pepe, member of the Economic Development Committee. The, one of the things about this proposal, which makes it sound a little odd, is the terminology of government-to-government, because while we do it all the time, we don't characterize it that way. So for example, a couple of months ago, there was a meeting here between the city, represented by member Starbuck and the mayor, and the county, represented by supervisors Farr and Adam, and it had to do with the issue over the annexation north of the city for Summit Homes. And the discussion was between two governmental bodies, who had a different points of view on what to do about that, and that's how it proceeded. But we don't characterize it as a government-to-government, but that's what it was and is. Similarly, the city manager has been meeting with his counterparts at the Air Force Base, discussing issues of mutual interest between the Air Force Base at Vandenberg and the city of Lompoc. And again, it's not characterized as a government-to-government, but that's what's going on. The city manager's representing the city of Lompoc, and the Air Force are representing the Air Force, which is a federal entity, and if they reach agreements, as they did on a recreational, he comes back with a memo of understanding that you sign off on. So once you get over the terminology, it is really not a unusual item. I noticed early this year that the city of Solvang had entered into government-to-government relationships with the Chumash band. I raised this, I think, March or April meeting of the Economic Development Committee. We discussed it, and I was asked to go and do an investigation. I thereafter met with the mayor of Solvang, Mr. Richardson, and council member Deuce, who are the two members from Solvang on their ad hoc committee, discussed how they did it, why they did it, where they were going, and what their purposes were. I then met with Mr. Cohen, and I noticed Hans is also in the back, is gonna speak. I met with Mr. Cohen and had one or a couple of conversations with him. I brought it back to the Economic Development Committee, raised it as an issue, and for purposes of information, we had some discussion of it, and then we set it for the next meeting, which was June, when we had the vote. And during the conversation, there were a number of people on the Economic Development Committee who have noted that the Chumash have been very good neighbors. They represent some 800 of our citizens who work for them. There's been a lot of publicity, and justifiably so, of the great achievement at the bike park, and a lot of recognition of the Rotary and the Walker family and Santa Barbara Foundation. But the third largest contributor was the Chumash. They've also made very generous donations to the YMCA, which was noted by one of our members. They've also been supporters of the 805 Bike Race the last several years, and I'm sure there are lots of other things. And so the purpose of this is merely to sit down on a periodic basis and see if there aren't items of interest between the city and the Chumash that they want to talk about. The reason it's a two-year ad hoc committee, because as I understand it from legal counsel, after that point in time, it either has to become a regular committee or, or stopped. And that's the reason so. The Economic Development Committee saw no downside to this. We don't know if there's gonna be any upside, but until you sit down and talk to people, you don't know where it's gonna go. And that's why we made the recommendation. It was unanimous, and there was really no, no contrary opinions on it. And I'm available for any questions, if you have them.
Councilor Vega?
I do have a couple of questions, Steve. Solvang, they must have had a couple of key reasons to say, moving forward and building a relationship with them. Could you share any of those?
Sure, the, when I met with member Richardson, who is not a proponent of the expansion of the Chumash Casino, as many of you are probably aware, and he's not a proponent of the Camp Four annexation, if that happens, and Mr. Deuce is on the other side. There's, in the eastern end of the valley, there's a lot more discussion and debate about the relationship between the Chumash and the local citizens that really doesn't impact us. And so their primary purpose, and the mayor's primary purpose, even though he doesn't agree on some of the things that the Chumash was doing, is he wanted to have a dialogue, to have an opportunity to talk, raise these issues, and that's their motivation for doing it. From our point of view, I think we're gonna be more like what the city manager has been doing with the Air Force Base, because we don't have the contentious issues that there are in the eastern end of the valley. But that was their primary, as I understood it. And again, Solvang City Council member Deuce is here, and I'm sure he'll be able to respond better than I can. But that's, that's the reason they started it.
Would you like, would you like to hear from Councilor Deuce?
Yes, I would. If that's, if that's possible, that'd be great.
Good evening, and welcome to Lompoc. Hi, Hans Deuce. I'm from Solvang, a city council member. You got a question for me?
Actually, I'd just like a couple of the positives, or a couple of the reasons you think this is beneficial to you guys, and where you're, what you're looking at.
Well, one of the things that, that I'm really looking at is that it goes beyond what is going on in the valley today. There, there has been a rift in, in the valley. And I believe it's all due to lack of communication with the tribe. And this, this is what, we, we get this from the county also, that there, there is no government-to-government dialogue, and I feel that that's very important, to recognize the tribe for what they are, a sovereign nation, and to show that respect to them. And to open dialogue and show, show the way that we can work together. We don't need to be in adversity all the time. So that was, that was the reason that by my motion, we entered into government-to-government relationships on a, on a three-two vote. Now, we did, we did this in February of 2014. The meeting in 2015 was just reestablish the ad hoc committee. We, we do it annually. Again, we don't want to have a standing committee. That's basically what.
I got you. So the basis would be, if that's okay with you, would be just to build relationships and show respect for each other, regardless of the views, because of their contributions and what they're hoping to, looks like they're trying to raise the quality of life. Is that, is that what you're kinda saying?
Yeah. Well, and to, you know, to further, we are looking for opportunities to work together. Issues that concern, can concern both Solvang and the tribe. And like I say, opportunities that we might be able to have some joint ventures together. We just want to leave the door, we need to keep the door open, the communication going. There are no specific plans, or there were no specific plans, but just to have that relationship in place.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deuce.
Any further?
Councilmember... Okay.
I guess it's not public comment yet, so I'll save that for later.
Sure, okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Cohen, you're here with the tribe. Could I ask you just a couple of questions, please? I guess in the big scheme, is it okay that we throw ourselves at you? Are you aware of this? I mean, you're obviously here. What does the tribe feel about this?
You know, Chairman Armenta, who regrets not being here this evening, grew up in Lompoc, and his father actually had a farm here. Many tribal members can trace their roots to Lompoc. At least half of the existing workforce is based in Lompoc, and to acknowledge this, the tribe has built, at its own expense, a park-and-ride facility and provides, employer-provided busing, both to reduce the traffic impact and as a courtesy to our employees. In Solvang, where we have another ad hoc committee, the tribe owns and operates two hotels in downtown Solvang and a Ford Diamond Restaurant, and we're very integrated into the city of Solvang. In Lompoc, we hope to be more integrated into Lompoc, but we have a winemaking facility located in your wine ghetto. It's called Kito Wines, and it's managed by the former vice chairman, Richard Gomez's daughter, Tara Gomez, and we're very proud of that winery. And we look forward to doing other cooperative efforts with our friends in Lompoc.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay, I have a comment, and I've got a question for our city attorney. I guess I'll go with the question for the city attorney first. It was mentioned that this is going to be a two-year ad hoc committee, and I believe it was stated that the reason it's only two years, because if we go further, we have to have it as a regular committee. But yet, the city of Solvang chooses to renew their ad hoc every couple of years. Tell me what our options are after two years, if we choose to go ahead with this.
You could renew it. It's sort of, it's something of a Brown Act issue, as to whether this ad hoc committee is going to be a Brown Act committee. When they're permanent, that becomes more of an issue. With public consideration of renewing it, it's, you can preserve the non-Brown Act committee aspect of it.
Okay, thank you. So, if we choose to go ahead tonight, I guess we'll address that in two years then.
Yes.
Okay. And then, my comment is, just so everyone knows, this is really not, well, we're formalizing something that does not happen the way an ad hoc committee is, but myself, our former mayor, Mr. Lynn, is here, and we, and probably some of the council members, on not a regular basis, but on an occasional basis, we will meet with members of the tribe to do exactly this, establish a relationship and look for some mutual ground. The bike park donation did not happen overnight. The money that they came to the city rescue on the fireworks did not happen, just because they thought it was a great idea. I mean, even though they do that often, I mean, we have these conversations on a semi-regular basis, where we have this discussion under mutual benefit for both the tribe and the city. So, what we're doing here, if we do it this evening, is to formalize it and have an ad hoc committee where it'd be the mayor and a council member there. So, it's not something that's completely unusual happening, is my comment. Any other comments from the council? Okay, then I'm going to open this up for public comment on this issue. Step forward. Can't talk from back there.
Mary Saladino, a citizen of Lompoc. I have a question. I think it's definitely a good idea to have relationships with your neighbors, and I think the tribe has shown very much grace in being neighbors to people who came to live on their land. And so, I think I need to ask somebody to explain to me what it means if they are a sovereign nation and we are citizens. Can someone explain the difference? Are they considered citizens as well? What does it mean?
Yes. They are, in fact, citizens.
Of the county?
I believe they're citizens of the United States.
Just like any other citizen?
Mr. Cohen, maybe you could step forward and help us with this.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for my ignorance. I just need to know.
Because tribal governments, well, predated state governments, and, well, actually predated the entire United States, tribes are considered sovereign governments that have a government-to-government relationship with the federal government, the United States of America. Because of some of the bad history of the subjugation of the tribes, they're considered domestic-dependent nations by the U.S. Supreme Court. And so, the federal government has a long-term government-to-government relations with its tribal wards. It gets more complicated when we talk about states, which came later, like 1850 in California, or cities, which are sub-governments of the state. And really, the tribal relationship is with the federal governments, and they are considered separate governments within the state of California and within the United States.
That sounds wonderful, but what does that mean and how we can work together?
The tribe has its own government, and therefore, and it has its own elected council. It's called the Tribal Business Committee. It's five members, an elected chairman and four business committee members. We have a business committee member with us this evening, a newly-elected business committee member, Maxine Littlejohn, who's an elected member of the tribal government. And these elected members of the tribal government, out of that group, will select two, to interface with two members, the mayor and one other member of the city of Lompoc, to discuss matters of mutual interest.
Okay, so, when we make decisions to be neighbors and friends and helpful to one another, who do we have to ask permission from?
Okay. I think, Mary, we're going to have to, you've got your three minutes there, and I think, Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
These are just things that need to be clarified.
Of course. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Public comment.
John Lynn, Lompoc resident. First, I want to correct everyone, the Tumash tribe is the largest private employer in the city of Lompoc. They employ more persons than any other non-government entity. As the mayor mentioned, when I was mayor, we could always count on them when we were in between a rock and a hard place, and we couldn't get some funding to finish something. And it was, you knew that you always had them at your back, so when there was a project going forward and a little gap or a big gap needed to be filled, and I could probably stand here and rattle off a list of 20 names, but I think most of you on the council are familiar with all of the projects they've contributed to. And you know, I want to compliment the Economic Development Committee, because it never occurred to me when I was mayor to begin this process, and the city of Solvang did a good job. So, obviously, I'm in favor of it, and I think tribes in general have maybe not received the kind of treatment they should have through history, and this is one more opportunity for all of you on the council to give them some recognition which they so richly deserve. I think all of us know that their land was stolen from them at the turn of the century, and they have worked diligently to bring a better standard of living to their tribal members. After their half-interest in the San Ynez Valley was stolen from them, they were given 100 acres in the bottom of a ravine with no water. And from there, they've come a very long way. It's good, I think, to have a slightly more formal relationship that reminds us we need to talk a little more often, and that's what this will do. And it provides an opportunity for both sides to look at things periodically and go, hey, can we help you with this? Not just, can they help us, but can we help them? And I have faith that the mayor will do that, and I would encourage each and every one of you on the council to volunteer, so it'll be a race. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, for the opportunity. I'm still Hans Deuce from Solvang. I would just ask you to join Solvang as another city to have, to recognize the tribe, but do it for the right reasons. Not for their economic power, not for all their money, not for what they can do, but do it because they deserve it, please, whether they were rich or 50 years ago. Do it because they deserve the respect that they are a sovereign nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on this issue, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, it's real good to hear all the information here. I went to school with many of the Indians in Lompoc Valley, Centeno's, Armentas, also in the San Ynez Valley when I lived over there in the '40s, and they've always been great friends and great people. And it's good to see us finally tying things together. I've talked to them many a times, and some of the things they had got involved in, they took the lead on it. And I'm really pleased to see that this is going to go on down the road, because it does give us some extent of working the relations and working together. And as you talk, we've got about 800 people working from Lompoc over in that area. They bring other things into town, and also, those people are coming into town, and they bring it over in San Ynez area, and they'll come into Lompoc checking it out. Of course, they'll check on our wineries out, you know, that's a real plus for all of us. We've got to keep the wines going. But it is interesting to listen to the comments from the Indian tribes and everybody else who's involved in it, of getting this project together, working together hand-in-hand on some major projects that come down the road, that everybody's on the same page. And I think that's the real plus, of getting on the same page.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I think it's also a golden opportunity for us to show respect for someone who's done well. These people have done, from next to nothing, when I was going to school, I remember there was nothing but fields out there, and if you go look, you know, they've built quite an empire out there from basically nothing, except in a belief of themselves. And you know, from what I understand, and from what I know of the Tumash people, that's what we basically are here for, to show respect to each other and to move forward, provide opportunity. We're trying to do this on our own, but wouldn't it be a great thing to do it together and help each other out? As we move forward, if this thing goes through, I'd love to be a part of this ad hoc committee.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I want to really compliment this council and Mr. Deuce, Councilmember Deuce from Solvang, for discussing it's not necessarily about the money. We appreciate the financial help that the Tumash have offered us, but it is showing mutual respect. And I think that's probably more what we're, if we do this tonight, more what I would be very satisfied with, is the mutual respect between our two bodies. Okay, I want to handle this in two parts. First, I'd like to bring it to the council as to whether we approve going ahead with the ad hoc committee, and then we will decide, if we choose to go ahead with the ad hoc committee, then we will decide who the members will be. So, oops, look at all these lights. I don't know who will win first, but here, to my right, left.
Yeah, I like to move that we go ahead and put the program together, and it'll be a two-year program, and it can be extended each, every two years.
And I need a second.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and the motion is to move forward with an ad hoc committee of the mayor and another council member. So, that, Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our mayor pro temp to move into that position as the secondary.
Okay, it's going to be a two-part. We're going to first move forward the committee, or move forward, and then we'll decide on the other members, but thank you very much.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of the Brown Act, as we have much of the evening, there is no item on the agenda regarding appointment of the committee.
Well, actually, they're...
Is it in the staff report, and I just don't recall?
It says, let's see, ad hoc committee...
Established for a two-year period. I stand corrected.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to move forward with the ad hoc committee. Discussion? Your light's on. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I was ready.
Okay. A motion and a second? I'm sorry. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, now, we want to discuss the member, the way that it's written, that's going to be the mayor and one other council member. So, let's have some discussion on that, and Councilmember Vega, you have your light on first.
Yep, I'd like to volunteer for the ad hoc committee.
Are there any other members that would like?
So would I.
Okay, we have two. Councilmember Mosby, you had made a recommendation.
It seems like we're going over, my logic was that we had the mayor and the mayor pro temp, since he fills in for the mayor. That was my logic and thinking on that, but I didn't realize there was, well, I guess I did realize there was such a demand.
Okay.
But, I don't know, draws draws. Rest.
Okay. Your light was on. Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Vega.
Well, let's figure out what we're going to do here, because it looks like we have a strike, but I still would like to be on it.
Okay. Councilmember Humdol, you still want to be a member? Turn your light on.
Yeah, the real reason is because I did work with them for many times over in the San Ynez Valley and the Lompoc Valley, and also the Centeno's. And Mr. Centeno used to come down to supervisor meetings on some major issues in Santa Barbara County, and so, I did work with him at that time, and I'd love to get back on, and the Armentas.
Councilmember Vega.
And if I have to put out my plea, I think we need some new blood. We need some people out here. You know, it's my first term in office, and I bring some diversity, some knowledge of how to build a business, how to move forward, and let's build some jobs, let's help our kids out. So, that's basically what I like to do. It's not about going, who you went to school with, it's about what we can do moving forward.
Okay, so, I guess what we're going to do is, we're going to decide on the council. If the two of you, I'm going to ask the two of you if you would mind just abstaining. Is this okay, abstaining from the, and we'll leave it up to the three of us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, the three of us are going to decide, and...
Oh, I want to get out of that decision, so I'm volunteering for the ad hoc.
Okay, so, just, I'm going to go along with Councilmember Humdol.
Oh, I'll have to go with Vega then.
I'm going to go with the youth. I'll go with Victor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so, congratulations, Victor, Councilmember Vega. So, the ad hoc committee will be myself and Councilmember Vega. Congratulations. Okay, that was entertaining. Okay, written communications.
Nothing.
Okay, oral communications. This is your last opportunity to speak to us concerning any item, for up to two minutes. This is your last opportunity to speak to us concerning any item for up to two minutes. I'm not getting it in off, you have two minutes.
Are you not going to have any more questions?
Ma, Mary, that's what this is. This is oral communication right now.
No, I mean, uh, it's very...
Come on, you've got to come to the microphone.
Is it just, uh, council members and city representatives at this point, or are you going to be asking citizens from the community to be a part of that ad hoc?
At, at this point, it's just the members of the Chumash and the council.
And the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Two of us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else for oral communication? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication. And council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start on the right. Councilmember Mosby?
Uh, nothing to report.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I have no reports.
Councilmember Vega?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Humdol?
Nothing to report, Charlie. They did go to the Human Services Commission, they did a real nice job putting things together. So I was real pleased, the job they were doing and where they're going.
Okay, um, sort of after the, Chief Ladipal, would you come up and just give us a brief report on our firefighters?
A week ago Saturday, our brush engine was dispatched with our crew as part of a five-engine strike team to the Lowell Fire burning in Nevada County. They fought that fire up until last Thursday and were redeployed to the Rocky Fire burning in now three counties. The primary county is Lake. They've been on that fire ever since Thursday. That fire is now, as of this evening, in excess of 65,000 acres, 12% contained, threatening numerous communities, 50 structures burned, about 25 of them homes. And, uh, we, in our contract with, uh, as part of our agreement here in what we call the operational area in the county, all the chiefs agree that when we send people out, we commit to 14 days, and at the 14-day mark for crew safety, uh, we, we change them out. So we anticipate being on the Rocky Fire for quite a few days more than, than the 14, so we're changing the crews out tonight, or not tonight. They'll leave early Friday morning, drive to Ukiah, uh, which is where the crews are bedding down, because it's so warm up there, they're putting a lot of folks in hotels. Uh, they'll change the crews, and the crews that have been gone for two weeks will come home. Additionally, two days ago, Fire Marshal Foose was deployed as part of the overhead team to handle the, uh... The Charro Fire, sorry. It started, and, uh, yeah. I finally get it. Some of you, yeah, some of you get the help, yeah. But it was the Charro, uh, uh, Charro Canyon, and that fire is now extinguished. Uh, we anticipate that they'll, that team will be redeployed. There's in excess of 21 fires burning just in the state of California, and now they're starting to pop up throughout the West. So what we projected at the beginning of the year unfortunately is unfolding. Uh, this is the fourth year of extreme drought. Uh, the fuels have no moisture in them, and they're just, if you don't get on them with enough people right away, they get large.
Thank you, chief. And just for our citizens that would be concerned that with our, some of our fighter fires deployed, um, how safe are we as a community?
We are at, we maintain our daily staffing the same way we have. Uh, we have not depleted our daily staffing. In addition, uh, we're in what we call a wind event, so the last couple of days, the winds that are coming through here out of the northwest are actually producing sundowners in the south of the county. So at noon, we've actually been up-staffing our reserve brush engine because the county agencies are very drawn down on resources. So we all have agreed within the county that if a vegetation fire starts, we're going to send our, our reserve brush engine along with other resources. So as an example, today, we had an additional engine crew on.
Thank you. Councilmember Humdol?
Yeah, chief, the one thing you may want to explain too is that, so the public knows that the people we're sending out of town are also getting, we're getting re, repaid on us because there are people, but how does that reimbursement work?
The California Fire Assistance Agreement is designed just for instances like these. And the way the, the way the contract is designed, the day our crews get called, they're paid time and a half from the time they leave to the time they get back. The reason that formula is there is because somebody's always on overtime, either the crew that's on the line or the crew that's backfilling them here at home. So in essence, the city is made whole on salaries. In addition, uh, there's an additional compensation included in the agreement, and that is we get paid by the hour for our brush engine. So it's like an equipment rental agreement. So the, we're made whole on the cost of the crews. The apparatus is compensated for, which was part of the financing plan that we put together when we bought the, the new brush engine. And, um, in addition, we're compensated at an administrative rate for the efforts in managing the crews, getting the change of crews going, and managing the billing process.
Thank you, chief. Okay, and the only other, I have one report to make. Um, I was on a city meeting at NCPA in the city of Murfrees, uh, on the 22nd and 23rd of last month. As many of you know, NCPA, Northern California Power Agency, we are a member of, and we have our hydro plants up in Murfrees, so we were up there for our monthly meeting, and we had a tour of the hydro plant. And please pray for rain because we are not producing, producing very much energy right now in our hydro plants, which we rely heavily on, so we need some water. And...
Following you up on that, I think it's a real good idea, but I think we also start need as a city, and we probably already have, is look at what's going to happen this winter. If they're talking about the amount of rainwater we're talking about coming down, uh, there's going to be some chance of flooding and other things, because in 1980, 97 and 98, in Magali de Canyon, I got 46 inches of rain, and it come down at heavy times. So I think that as we project into the, the future coming up this winter, we need to make sure we have, have that in back, just like we do with the fire department and others. We need to be ready for what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you, good idea. Okay, nothing else? We are adjourned to our next regularly scheduled meeting on August 18th at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.[1688.63]